Called the order of the city council work session for C V's Grand Forks for Tuesday, July 11th, 2017 is now 5:01. The city clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olson.
Here.
Council Vice President Brad Russell.
Here.
Council member Clarence Vetter.
Here.
Vice Attorney Mr. Smith.
Here.
And Rayan Bell.
Here.
Henry Clayton.
Here.
Martha Demers.
President. As turn corpsman, quorum. We're gonna actually start with number one here in a second. Mike Anderson is here and wants to address quickly on what he's working on. If you wanna come up to the mic and sit by Mr. Vetter there, use the microphone there. Just kinda go over what you're working on, sir.
First of all, thanks for having me here and taking a couple of minutes out of your busy schedules to hear me out. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Mike Anderson. I was a 25-year veteran of the East Grand Forks Police Department, retired two years ago. I'm also the president of the local motorcycle club called the Iron Pigs, Law Enforcement Firefighter Motorcycle Club. Every year, we have an event on August 12th in memorial for Kenneth M. Olson, who was the only police officer in East Grand Forks who have died in the line of duty. What we're asking of the council this year would be a motion, I guess, to name a bike path, a specific length of bike path after Kenneth Olson. And once that would be approved, we'd seek permission with a police escort to ride that on August 12th.
Go ahead, Mr. Mar.
I guess we really need anything from the council at this time. Are you gonna be meeting with the Greenway Committee on that or are you not?
You'll have to walk me through that process, but yes, whatever I need to do, I'll do.
Yeah, so I just wanted to get the council aware of it at this time, but it would have to go through the Greenway Committee first and then we've been contacting with them to start that process.
So, once that goes to their committee, comes back to us for approval, then?
Yes, Reed, is that correct?
Yeah, I had just a brief conversation with Kim Green. There's some criteria that the Greenway Committee passed shortly after the committee was brought together as a group on the naming of bridges and trails within the Greenway system. Then it would, we'd wanted to look at it from a Greenway Committee to make sure that it meets all that criteria and then go through some of the logistics of the ride. And is it a perpetual permission to have the ride on the trailer? Is it an annual permit? That kinda thing. So, we go through all that. Our next Greenway Committee meeting is next week, Tuesday. So, we first look at it there and then be able to work on all those details to bring back here to the council.
You'd want me at that meeting, then?
Yeah, that'd be great.
And what time would that be next Tuesday?
It's at 10:00 a.m. next Tuesday.
Okay.
At the Grand Forks Park District Office at Icon.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You go through my door to get in there and then you go up the stairs or over the top of the stairs.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Mike. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Mike. I'll move on to number one, presentation of the comprehensive annual financial report. Ms. Anderson?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Tracy Bruegemann and Amanda Skanson from Brady Mart. And Tracy will give us update on the capital which has completed and has been filed. It's on our website.
Thank you, Karen.
So, first, I'd like to thank you for hiring Brady Mart. And I'd also like to thank the city staff for their assistance during the audit. On page seven, you'll find the independent auditor's report. The city received an unmodified opinion, which is the same opinion the city has received in the prior year. In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position of the city of East Grand Forks as of December 31st, 2016, and the changes in financial position and cash flows where the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States. On page 22 is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the governmental funds. The general fund balance increased $1,819,721 and ended the year with a fund balance of $4,596,019. The capital project fund balance decreased $773,247 and ended the year with a deficit fund balance of $944,379. The current city projects fund balance increased $415,972 and ended the year with a fund balance of $144,803. The 12-107 assessment bonds fund balance increased $28,381 and ended the year with a fund balance of $860,948. The 12-104 assessment bonds fund balance decreased $2277,947 and ended the year with a fund balance of $75,903. The sales tax pool fund balance decreased $1,956,389 and ended the year with a deficit fund balance of $1,956,389. The non-major governmental fund balance decreased $708,450 and ended the year with a fund balance of $4,178,307. On page 27 is the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position for the proprietary funds. The electric fund had net income before transfers and contributions of $657,309 and ended the year with a net position of $27,987, $27,987,628. The water fund had net income of $92,420 and ended the year with a net position of $12,958,363. The sewage fund had net income of $726,369 and ended the year with a net position of $12,371,185. The stormwater fund had a net loss of $126,557 and ended the year with a net position of $11,764,979. The commercial properties had net income of $5,607 and ended the year with a net position of $1,245,179. The refuse fund had a net loss of $73,466 and ended the year with a net position of $119,389. The internal service fund had net income of $39,157 and ended the year with a net position of $1,094,944. On page 37 is note three, cash, cash equivalents and investments. The cash and investments are $3,300,000 less than the prior year. As of December 31st, 2016, cash and investment balance was $27,322,631. On page 126 is our report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance and other matters. And we noted no instances of noncompliance. And then this year, in addition to your financial statement audit, we also had to perform a single audit because the city spent in excess of $750,000 in federal dollars. So, on page 128 is our report on compliance for each major program and on the internal control over compliance required by the Uniform Guidance. We audited the capitalization grant for clean water, and the results of our test disclosed no instances of noncompliance. Any questions?
Raise my hand yet. On page 22, you said that there was, or the CAFR shows, a deficit of $944,379 in capital projects fund. Can you provide the narrative behind that change?
Hi.
Carla?
We, we in bond for the 2016 street improvement until March. Until that, the money didn't come into our.
Okay, so we're.
Yep, March of 2016.
So, in next year's CAFR, most likely, we will be back to $150,000, $120,000.
Correct. And it just varies depending on what projects we have and when the money comes in, flows in, or doesn't.
Okay. And then the second one on page 37, you talked about the cash, cash equivalents and investments. You said that the December 31st, 2016 number was $27,322,000 change. Where, where did it say, what, the 2015?
I looked it up.
Okay. And you said it was down?
Down three million.
Three million? So, what's the narrative behind that?
I would say the same thing with the projects.
So, just overall, but not just project bonding, but?
Did you have debt due to project funding? Yeah, we did. We actually paid off 2.4 million on a debt from 2015, but it wasn't due until 2016. And actually, it's in the, on the month page that went down a lot, went down $2.4 million, which on page 20.
Okay.
The change was, yeah, on page 22.
Oh.
The change was $2,277,694.7. That was 'cause we paid off the refunding. But it's actually.
Oh, that's the assessment bond.
Yes.
12-1.
We funded that bond and saved on it, and then we actually had to pay off the other bond because it was in.
Okay. No, thank you.
Any other question? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Number two, move request for people.
And if I could, this is Kirk Tingham. He is representing Folsom Farms. This is regarding the vacation of the street on Eighth between American Crystal Sugar and Folsom Farms for their potato warehouse project. You recall last meeting, there was petition and a shared agreement that has been drafted, and the public hearing is scheduled for August 1st for the vacation of the street. And that being said, I'll let Mr. Tingham.
Yeah, again, my name is Kirk Tingham from Grand Forks. Mr. Olson had mentioned that there is a shared use agreement that has actually been signed by both Folsom Farms and American Crystal Sugar. And I think we provided the attorney's office with a copy of that. In your packet, I think you received a copy of a, of the license that we're asking to be approved today. And attached to that is a certificate of survey. And that kind of explains why we're, we're here today. That certificate of survey has a little triangle that is shaded in, and that's a corner of the new proposed building that Folsom is going to put in. It encroaches onto their half, I'll call it, of Eighth Avenue Northeast. And so, that will be their property after the vacation of the street. Our immediate concern at this point is that in order to get this building finished for harvest time, we need to get started almost right away. There's cement work that has to be done and some prep work. And then the builders are coming in, would like to come in on the 18th of, of July. And what we're asking from the city then with this license agreement in simple terms is that for that little shaded area, we're asking permission from the city to do some construction on that area, which, like I say, will eventually end up as being owned by Folsom Farms after the, after the vacation. I guess if any of you have any questions, that's, that's basically what we're looking for. We'd like to have the license agreement approved, and at that point, we can get a building permit and can get them going.
And then tonight's a work session, so this matter will end up being our next council meeting for, for action.
Okay.
Request for approval. And then, and all I was gonna say, from the city's standpoint, we were requiring that that shared agreement be executed along with the petition before there was even a vacation that would be submitted to the, to the council. And the reason for that is in the vacation, there are storm sanitary sewers that were continuing to be used. They become private. And we wanted to make sure that Folsom Farms continue to have, have utilities. And the utilities actually were falling on American Crystal Sugar's side of the street vacation. And so, before we would even consider doing the vacation, we wanted to make sure that there was still utilities, however private, that would be serving Folsom Farms, we'll just say, buildings and potato water. And they were able to complement agreement, sign off on it. We do have signed copies of that that were provided in the petition. And this was something else that Public Works, Jason Stordahl was in, was in favor of because of the, just the maintenance of the, the configuration and the maintenance of the, the utilities over there at the.
Are you satisfied for moving it forward for approval, then?
I'm, I'm satisfied for moving it over for approval. I did have an opportunity to review the agreement. The agreement is specifically addressing just the issue that you presented. And, and it would allow them just to make sure that they get into the, get into the vacation area for, for building purposes or for the process goes through.
Nancy, is your office familiar with this, and you're okay with it?
We already have plans. We're just waiting patiently for Ron to give us the thumbs up. So, we're waiting patiently. I don't know if Folsom Farms would be waiting patiently anymore, but yes, we're ready to go.
Good.
So, we can issue it the day of.
Good.
So.
Mr. Demers.
So, thank you. Looking at this, glad that there's some work being done there, and hopefully we can get this project going forward. But looking at the vacation side of it, and maybe not necessarily this licensing part, when I, when I was looking at the, this, the plat, I know, I looked and I noticed the storm and the sanitary sewer wondering, and you kinda said that Jason would rather just privatize that whole run instead of giving him easement? Or is that, two things. Number one, is there gonna be remuneration for that? Or are we just giving them that infrastructure? And two, once that's in there, does this, how do we comply, or how does this comply with stormwater erosion control, all that? Do they have to have sedimentation before? I mean, I'm worried about industrial use type stuff, and is there pre-treatment stuff that needs to be done?
The stormwater, the stormwater, yeah, I mean, they'd be responsible if it was down, isn't, isn't compliant. And if it's still providing the same storm every day?
I'm just.
And if, if they put, it'd be no different than somewhere where, let's say they have a car wash or something. It still comes into our storm sewer system, and we're not responsible for the car wash. We would, we would let the business owner know that, you know, they're never seen whatever in our storm sewer that shouldn't be in there. And then it'd be, you know, if you see contact with them, they would deal with, with the business owner or, or private owner.
Right. I'm just wondering, does, this doesn't need any stormwater tension or anything to it?
No, it's where, I mean, the new imperious areas, we're less than an acre, and that's kinda what triggers it, is doing more than an acre of new imperious.
And there's no parking or anything like that included in this? Okay.
Senator Demers.
Just one question. Are you, is this just storage, or is it fitting in with the rest of the equipment? Is it processing, or what is it?
I believe it's just storage.
It's just storage.
Thing is that, what you should do, you should go and see Bonnie Abel to see if there's any energy credits. She's in the water and light department. Have you done that yet?
We have not.
She's in the first floor here down the end, so. And if, and if you're doing anything relative to modernization, equipment and so forth, why, you should talk to her. A lot of people building buildings don't do that. And we want the people who are expanding to take advantage of what we can do for you.
Okay. We'll certainly, we'll certainly talk with her.
Any else? Mr. Demers.
Just one last thing. And this doesn't maybe refer to this project, but we may wanna look at what triggers the stormwater infrastructure, because if someone does something that's three-quarters an acre, and then a year later, they do something that's half an acre, and then next year, they do something that's another three-quarters an acre. And if we can tell that that's the way that they're gonna go, we should probably have something that we can look at to make sure that we're gonna take this, whatever. Cause I just know what comes out of all these industrial places. I mean, we don't want it in our stormwater. We're gonna be looking at some stuff, I think, coming up with stormwater. And we should just be able to look ahead and not just focus strictly on, well, if it's an acre, then we're gonna require a pond or something like that, so.
Anybody else have anything? Seeing none, I appreciate it, sir. Thanks for coming in.
All right.
Move on to number three, the review of the bids for 15 A G two paving in Pointe Woods Fifth and Sixth. Mr. Emery, again, this is just a review of the bids that were received last week, was it?
Yep.
So, if you wanna go over the review of the bids, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Handed out 11 by 17 sheets to everyone. Again, like Mr. Olson said, we open bids on July 6th. Again, this is for the concrete paving project out in the replat of Pointe Woods Fifth Edition and also the Pointe Woods Sixth Edition. Again, like we discussed the previous work session, we did bid the project with the two proposals, with the intent that the project would be awarded based on the total of proposals one and two. Again, it was bid that weighed just for intent, kind of other residents, just to really see what the cost was for that 162 feet. So, again, proposal one was for all of the paving on Brandon Boulevard minus the 162 feet coming off Laurel Drive. It also included the paving in the two cul-de-sacs. Did receive seven bids, which is unheard of almost on a project this size. Again, the low bid for proposal one is op construction at $263,021.50. Had good competitive bids from, really from the low bidder all the way up to the sixth place bidder. Difference of only about $34,000. Seventh place bidder, he must've been bidding a different project, cause he was way out of, way out of there, so.
Well, you actually got eight bids. If you count Northerns, it's eight bids.
Yeah, he was used twice as much, so. And again, between the first and second bid, we had only really about $4,300. So, again, very good competitive bids. On the next page, proposal number two, again, which was that 162 lineal feet coming off of Laurel Drive. Again, between first and second bid, only about $2,000 difference. So, again, very, very good numbers. And really, from first to the sixth bid, you know, again, total of about $11,000, so. So, with that, looking at it, like the total bid, proposals one and two, again, op construction is low at $295,636. Our estimate on it, we were at about $339,260. So, you know, approximately $44,000, $45,000 underneath our estimate. So, again, very good numbers. I think it's what we're hoping for. I know at first, we were talking about, we're hoping we'd get three bids. So, to receive seven bids, like I said, it's kind of unheard of. So, I guess with that, I'll just open it up for any discussion. I know we got, I think, the next day, Megan got the notices out to the residents on potential assessments. And I think the final assessment hearing is set for August 1st. So, really, tonight, this was just kinda informational purposes. Wanted to kinda just review the numbers with you guys, so.
There. As a point of clarification, too, that the rolls that went out that showed lower numbers than what these families had seen, that reduction was completely the result of this contractor that came in lower than engineer's estimate. So far, we have not seen any part that may come from pulling out that 162 feet. So, if you opened your letter and were pleased with that number, I'm happy about that. Add it to your Kurgwetter Sewer Water. I know it's still a really big number. And yet, what you're looking at there is for a reduction from the proposal that you first saw is a result of, of a good competitive bid process. And then, we can continue the conversation as a next agenda item for that, that other, that other question.
And we have a question on the review of the numbers that came in. Seeing none? Thank you, sir. Move on to number four, discussion on possible funding for a portion of the 15 A G two. Mayor Gander.
As we, most of us would remember, when we first thought about doing this project, we received options from our engineering firm that included the possibility of putting an end benefit onto Laurel for the paving of Brandon. And at that time, according to that calculation, the amounts for every family on Laurel, that is eight families, four on each side of, of this, and some are still bare lots unsold, would have been in the range of $7,000 more or less for each of those families. We, the council, then elected to not pursue that option and to carry the cost of all of this pavement project onto those lots that are located upon Brandon and upon the two cul-de-sacs off of Brandon. The more we talked about it and considered it, at least in the minds of some of us, that 162 feet that lays out inside of Laurel really looks like a completion of the Laurel paving project. Doesn't necessarily, in the mind of some of us, I'm not speaking for everybody, does not lay out really as an applicable cost to the families along Brandon. So, we went back and took another look and said, you know, that 162 feet, is there a way that we could carry those costs and away from the folks on Brandon and, and look at maybe specials upon Laurel? Of course, the way the timelines were, we looked very closely at all of that, and there's no chance for that in this construction season. And we now see that we have a wonderfully competitive bid process, and therefore, we'd want to get it done this year. And so, we're back to the question of if not, special assessment in the range, with the recalculation, it was going to come back down closer to $4,000 per family on Laurel. But even so, that wouldn't work timeline-wise. And so, as we consider, where else could those funds possibly come from to cover that 162 feet, that first 162 then that would connect Brandon to Laurel? And we came up with three general sources of those funds. One, perhaps the folks on Laurel would willingly accept a smaller special assessment of some dollar amount, combine that with dollars invested by the developer, and then combine that with some city funds outside of the general fund, hopefully in a state aid maintenance fund account that we have, or, or another fund that we could identify. And so, I bring for conversation this possibility of bringing these funding sources together, three again, a voluntary assessment that the folks on Laurel would accept of a smaller amount, hopefully in the range of around $1,500 per family, combined with some dollars from the developer and combined with some dollars committed by the city. And if I get the general okay, Mike and I are ready to revise a letter that we would hand deliver to the families on Laurel, to these eight. We would, in fact, we're down to six because we met with Mr. Peabody today, and he said of the two lots that he owned, he would be willing to have the $1,500 special assessment attached to those two properties. Now, we're down to six that we would visit with and hand deliver this and talk through the scenario. The beauty of this is if they would be willing to accept that, that $1,500 cost or some other number that we all agree to, it would let the project go forward this year. It would pull a portion of the cost off of Brandon and, and probably go a long way toward restoring kind of a peaceful climate in this neighborhood. It's been a tense little time as we go through. Anytime you, you hit close to a family's bottom line, it's going to be a little bit dicey. It's totally understandable. It's absolutely universal. And yet, we may be in a place to work through that in a way that's gonna bring some peace and harmony back into, to the neighborhood and even into some families. We've heard of husbands and wives who has some little friction surrounding this whole thing. So, maybe we get to, to be part of restoring some harmony there, but really doing it in a fiscally responsible way. I feel good that, that the source of funds would be several and not just the city. city picking up the balance. Um, and so I'd, I'd ask for direction. You all got a copy of this letter earlier. It is absolutely a draft copy. Um, wanted to be legal, wanted to be accurate from an engineering standpoint. Um, and of course, wanted to match up with the preferences of, of we, the city council.
Thank you. Um, this has been a long laborious process. It's in my ward, and so I've been working closely with the mayor and some of the residents, um, trying to figure out a way to break what I've described as an impasse to getting this project moving forward. When the mayor initially suggested public funds be used to pay for the 162 feet, I couldn't support that, um, having the city pay for that, that entire amount. So I told him that a condition for my support would be to share that burden with, um, the residents or, or the developer. And, um, through discussions with, uh, one or two other council members, uh, we decided to approach this as a three-way, a three-way partnership to, to get us to getting that portion of the project paved. So, um, I'm going to support this. I know that, uh, not everyone, not everyone agrees with this approach. Uh, I certainly understand that, respect everyone's position, whatever it might be. But, um, in order to get this development, um, moving forward and that area of the city growing, uh, to its full potential, I would hope that, um, I would hope that we could swallow this compromise and, and move forward.
Do you wanna go through the breakdown?
It's still, uh, it's still a, a moving target. Well, it won't be a third, third, a third. I can promise you that.
It's not going to be.
It's a, it was gonna be $42,000 before, and that was according to the engineer's estimate. The, the 162 feet turned into closer to $32,000 with the competitive bids that we received.
There's 15, 19% tacked onto that. Right?
Yeah, the 40, the 42 did include your soft cost and stuff.
Okay.
Then you should add that in.
Yep. So what would, yep, we'll come up with a new number. Um, and so we're gonna have to see how it, how it comes together. I can't speak for the developer, for example, to the total dollar that he would put in. I cannot speak for what sort of response we're going to get as a voluntary special assessment. What we're looking for now is the, is a kind of a green light to go ahead and talk to the neighbors, talk to the families about the possibility of this, and then see where we end up. I can't see where we're going to end up.
Couple of other questions I do have. Um, one, uh, I know that, uh, looking at the interest rate should be on here. There is gonna be an interest rate. They do decide to build a special assessment. Um, Ron would, Mr. Galstead would have to sign off and everything. Legalities of this document, let's say they sign this document whenever it's done, is that stand? Is that, is it, is it gonna?
We would have to contract. I'll have to look into, I just got a chance to look at this late today. So I don't really have any comment going forward until I have a chance to look at it.
Nope. So I was looking for, I didn't know if you had time or not. Thank you. Um, I think... If something like this does go forth, talking with them, I would like to know the numbers. I would like to know that, are you gonna get 100% of people to sign this? If you don't get 100% of people to sign it, what's gonna happen then?
Exactly. At the end of the day, the city will have to decide, are we really willing to put up the balance to, to finish that portion? That would be a decision for us at the end.
I, I can speak for what the mayor has told me, that if we don't get 100% on board, he'll veto it.
Especially on the Brandon portion, right?
Whatever. That's your decision.
Yeah.
I guess I'd, I'd like you to speak to that because I, I think that, that is crucial to making this work, is that everybody either voluntarily or they, they withdraw their right to appeal, that if they want this project done, we all have to agree to not fight it. This is an out-of-court settlement, essentially, is what we're asking for before we proceed with the project.
And I guess we met earlier with one of the families from Brandon, and I hope they understand, I hope that you all understand, we appreciate the work of Mr. Peabody, for example, but this is not about anything relating to that developer. Good, good developer, he's done a lot of good for our community. This is really us really trying to go to the nth degree for our citizens, for our, particularly the families along Brandon. This is us trying to make this piece of pavement as fair and as affordable for the families along Brandon as we possibly can, within the context of our own policies, within the context of good governance. That's what we're doing. We're trying to make this as fair, knowing that the, the Curb Better Sewer Water is higher than a lot of people would've liked to have seen. And that, it just happened that way, you know. I don't know that we can point any fingers there either. It's done and over. But in light of that, we're really working to get this piece of pavement in the ground as affordably and as fairly as we possibly can.
Mr. Tweeden.
I, uh, support the mayor and I support Mike. I think that if we keep fooling around with this, uh, it's inevitable it's gonna cost more money. And, uh, we get a lot, a lot of hard feelings in a neighborhood where we're trying to promote growth, good, healthy growth. And, uh, I feel it's our responsibility. We run into some unusual things. Uh, and, but we wanna help people wherever we can. That's the policy.
Mr. Murphy.
I have two, I have, I have just two questions or I just wanted to clarify real quick. When you, uh, did you get some indication from the developer that you would like to participate in these partials?
He has indicated, um, and we're still in conversation with him, but he has indicated, um, a willingness to allow the roughly $3,000 if we stick to a number of $1,500 to the two lots that he still owns on Laurel. And he, he's also agreed to a cash amount over and above that. And we're gonna have to continue to work on that number.
No, I, I just wanted to, sorry.
Yes.
And then the other thing I think the council should be aware of, um, I spoke to a, a couple of you about the, as I've, um, had contact with you, that I have had a request from, uh, some of the property owners, a concern out there that, that 162 feet, uh, the portion that that would be in this overall project, um, the amount that that would be reduced should be applied to Pointe Woods Fifth only and not Pointe Woods Sixth as well. Uh, the reasoning that I was given is that...
Oops, excuse me. Sorry. The reasoning that I was given was that, um, the Pointe Woods Fifth has already received an assessment for the curb and the utilities and that, that are under the, that 162 feet currently, uh, whereas Pointe Woods Sixth did not. Uh, and I have received some indication that they would, that that could potentially be a deal breaker with them. Just wanted to, council could worry about that.
And we'll sure have that conversation. I can tell you, the way that this project has been bid, the way this project has been specially assessed, um, it looks to me like whatever savings we can come up with here would have to go across the entire project. But that's, that's how it looks to me, and we are a full council which would all get to decide that. Um, but I can say that, again, as these costs have come across and as have they've distributed to the properties, um, I would have to continue to think that any savings we can find here would distribute across to each one as well.
Clarence.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a point of clarification, you talked about a third and a third and a thirds. Are you looking at those on Laurel picking voluntarily, picking up a third of that 162 feet and then the Brandon eight circle, that the original project picking up a third through the special assessments and the final third picked up by the city?
The three players, um, and it's not gonna be a third, a third, a third. It just won't. It won't work out that way. It's going to be participation by three different entities. It is the families along Laurel. It is the developer. So, Mr. Peabody himself and Trent, their, their company and the city. So we're not asking in this case to go back onto Brandon for a portion of the 162. We are looking at it coming from those three sources. And again, I promise you, it won't be in thirds, um, because we don't know about participation here. We can't control a commitment by the developer. But we're gonna have to, I promise you, at the end, we're gonna swallow hard as a council and say, are we willing to put in that increment, whatever it is, beyond what Mr. Peabody puts in, whatever they voluntarily commit to from Laurel? We're gonna have to swallow real hard and ask ourselves if we're willing to come up with that dollar. And I do not know what that dollar will be. There are just a lot of moving parts here right now.
Anything else, Clarence? Chad.
I guess I can, if you can get these people to agree to this, I have no problem going forward with this. Um, I will say this. We need, I know we need to have growth and development in our city, but from now on, this is one of those things that the next development that comes through, that better be gone through with a fine-tooth comb, so that we don't have seven people standing here screaming and hollering at us. We don't have neighbors fighting and people telling us it's our fault, that we did things wrong. And in all reality, we are just the bank. And it is very frustrating when you have people pointing fingers at seven people who really just voted yes to be the bank. So I'm all willing to go forward with this because those people deserve that role. They need, I mean, they've got beautiful homes out there. They need it. I'll go along with it, but from here on out, it's kinda like one of those things. It's happened. We got, we've got ourselves in trouble a little bit. We're not gonna do it again.
Go me once. Shame on me, yep. Mark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I guess I would just like to say, uh, the way it's laid out, it sounds like we should, if we're not gonna just say it's gonna be a third, a third, a third, we might as well just say the city's gonna pick up $30,000 of this because that's the way it sounds like, without any hard numbers, you know, if you're talking, you know, maybe $12,000 from Laurel Drive if they volunteer. We haven't heard anything, I mean, we haven't heard anything from the developer of, well, I'm not gonna pay a third, but I might kick in something. So I guess my thought is if we should just figure on, if it's gonna be $30,000, that that's the number we should be talking about because it sounds like we're kinda tap dancing around. That's what we're being asked to fund.
It would be less than that.
How much? I mean, we, we keep talking about these pie in the sky numbers and people are, are, we're getting asked to give, give credence to something that there's nothing, there's no numbers there.
What we're asking for right now is, is the okay from y'all to talk to the neighbors. That's all. Can, would you be okay if we sat down and visited with them in their neighborhood in a friendly way, uh, to see if they're willing to sign on to something like this? That's all we want right now.
And I would say that the, in my, this is my opinion, and it shouldn't be a third and a third unless the third is a third from Laurel Drive, a third from the developer, and a third from Brandon. If you can figure out that, that's how I would take it because nobody else in this city should be on the hook for it. I'm just saying, nobody else in this city that's, it should be paying for this. And you say it's not, it's gonna come out of state aid maintenance dollars. Well, that comes out of other projects' pockets, which come out of other people's pockets. It's, and they are tax dollars, whether or not we wanna call them, they don't come right from here, but they are tax dollars. Um, but this, the, we as a city shouldn't be subsidizing this development. These are more than affordable costs. They're directly in line with any other improvements, utility improvements anywhere else in the city. Um, and I, I just say, I mean, all of these people too, we talk about one thing that we don't necessarily do in Grand Forks. When we compare our utilities to what they're going in Grand Forks, not only are we in line dollar for dollar for what it costs, but we're also giving people $5,000 cash and two years' tax abatement, which is about $10,000 to $15,000 in this neighborhood. So, if you wanna take that money and pay it on your specials, I guess that's what my recommendation would be. So...
Show me another development where we have upwards of $50,000 in specials. If, if you say it's in line with other communities, other neighbors.
Well, here's, we also, this is...
Show me one more development in our city close to 50K in specials. Show me one.
These, the, the areas, the average area of this, of a lot in this development is 20,000 feet, square feet. That's, and I didn't run a kilk on every lot in town, but I spot checked a fair note, amount of them. And you would be generous to say that 10,000 is the average. But we'll use 10,000 for the rest. So we're talking double the size. Double the size. And 10 years ago, I'll give, use my own as an example. I, 10 years ago, I have a 10,000 square foot lot. My specials were 20,000. So if you double that, that's 20, or that's $40,000 10 years ago. So they are in line.
How about today?
Go across the river. See what they're paying for specials.
How about today in our city with a 110-foot frontage?
We don't have any other 110, we don't have 115-foot frontages.
These are, some of these are close.
Well, that's here. I'm saying, compare it to everybody else in town. That's what drives up the cost, is when you have bigger lots, that's what drives up the cost.
But there are plenty of other developments with 110, 115 frontage.
I'm just saying, these are very affordable in the market, Grand Forks, East Grand Forks. I don't think people on Second Avenue Northeast should be paying for them. I don't think that people on Fifth Avenue Northwest should be paying for this. If that area can figure it out, they should figure it out.
State aid maintenance.
Chad.
So the question is, are we comfortable with these people going out and doing that? That's the question we're at right now. I think we've got somewhat of consensus. Not trying to run your meeting for you, Mr. Olsted, but just get this thing over with.
The next person I was gonna talk to is Mr. Riepel.
All right, let's go.
I, when we first proposed this to you, I wanted the third, third, and a third. I'm more than happy to get this project done. I want it done. But on Chad's accord, I wanna do the same thing. This ain't happening again. We're gonna do the developer agreement and we're gonna make sure that this does not happen again. I don't like getting yelled at for no reason at all.
There's always a reason.
Never.
I'd suggest we move it on.
Just hang on a second, please. You have a quick comment?
Yeah, I'd like to stand up and say, I'd like to...
Can you both sit at the microphone?
I've heard a few guys say that the city is just the loan officer. Did you guys also determine who pays the specials and at what amount? Um, I also wanna say that this bid has came in really low. I know you said if not 100% are on board, that we're not gonna go with the project. I think we should rethink that. If we have one or two that are against the project, we should still go forward on paving it. Um, I have a few bids that came off of Grand Forks, off the King's Walk. Um, right now, we're sitting at 150 feet or $150 per foot. Um, if we take out proposal number two, we're gonna be sitting at about $133 per foot at front benefit. Um, on one of the King's Walk, uh, paving, the bid came in at $221 per foot. And then a one that happened a few years ago, came in at 141 per foot. So if we're sitting at $133 per foot with that 161 feet taken off, I think it's something we have, have to move forward on. It could be 180, could get up to 212 next year.
It's only gonna go up from here. This is the best shot y'all are gonna get.
Exactly, exactly. And I think, um, you know, brought up interest rates, that's something we can also look at. Um, is it usually east side, does one point over their bond?
Carly, do you remember?
So I think that's also something to think about to help out over there on Brandon Boulevard. Um, just looking at my paving specials right now is at $22,000. Uh, with a 20-year annual payment at four and a half percent, my total interest will be $11,800 over the 20 years. If we could drop that down to 3% annual payment to, over the 20 years, I'll pay about $7,500 in interest. It's about a savings of $4,200 over those 20 years. Um, just one idea to think about to help out on some of those costs over there. I guess... You know, some ways we do help out develop in East Grand Forks is giving $100,000 to hundred thousand dollars to builders, interest-free, until they sell the house. If you charge them four and a half percent over the year, that one year, it'd be forty-five hundred dollars. So as, with the interest rates, we do help out in other ways. I think we could use some help over here on how high the specials have got. The number one thing is, we need to move forward on this. I'm not sure what our options are. If we can't settle the hundred and sixty-two feet, well, I mean, I would say let's not pour it then this year. Let's pour the fifth and the sixth, and then we can leave the hundred and sixty-two feet there. I mean, we gotta move forward on this, because it isn't gonna get cheaper. And we're already high. So I think even if we do have a few letters that are in there, I think we need to move forward. I will pull my letter out if we can settle that hundred and sixty-two feet, to move forward and take these prices.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I think you gave your direction.
Thank you. And again, Ron, please, from a legal standpoint, Steve, from a, from the engineering standpoint.
The one thing I would, I would add on your letter too, you probably wanna put in there the timeframe for paying off.
Well, you'd have to have a whole different document. This letter wouldn't suffice. You'd end up having, if it's gonna be legal, it's gonna have to be a binding document with a waiver of objection.
Drop contracts.
That wouldn't be included in it.
Have some fun with this.
I would, I would recommend changing your number from fifteen hundred to at least three thousand. I mean, you're talking about forty-five hundred, you're already giving them a thousand plus, like, like we, we just heard, there's no guarantee if we do this next year, it's gonna be more than forty-five hundred. I just think...
I'd probably top out at two.
Why? What is, what are, why is every...
It's voluntary. We're asking them to do something voluntarily.
It's voluntary in lieu of next year having a potentially higher one.
And it wouldn't be...
So it's, it's not like we're...
Next year it wouldn't be seven unless the bids came a lot higher. It'd be closer to four.
So why not, why are we cutting it in more than half? Seems like a terrible negotiation strategy.
Mike.
Before we move on to the next item, there are other residents here, and just give you an opportunity to speak up if, if you feel like it, if you not, if not, that's fine. I just wanna make sure you didn't miss a chance before we moved on. Fine, thank you.
Anything else, sir?
Nope, that's all I got.
Anybody else have anything? All right, moving on to the next one.
Sorry, one last thing. Really, if you have a thought on that number, fifteen hundred, two thousand, max at three thousand, please let me know. My contract level tops out at two thousand, just so you know. But I wanna hear from, anyone who has a thought on that, I'd love to hear from you. Please, one-on-one, call me, whatever.
No mass email, please.
No mass email.
Thank you.
We don't do mass email.
I know, no, just stressing, please don't. All right, move on to the next one, please. Request to worth sand and salt storage job, Mr. Emery. Yes. Finally.
Year ten of the sand salt shed, let's get it done. As the world's third Groundhog Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we opened bids on June twenty-ninth for the sand salt storage shed, received two bids, two competitive bids. Again, the low bid right now is a hundred and eleven thousand, seven oh four ninety. Our estimate is about approximately a hundred and twenty thousand, so approximately about eight thousand underneath our estimate. So I guess with that, we would be making the recommendation to award that project to, and I gotta apologize, it's either Paul's Avril I see we got on here, or it's Higher Ground.
He didn't change his name, did he, Mark? As far as you know?
Just Higher Ground.
It's Higher Ground, yeah. So our recommendation is to award the contract to Higher Ground, and the amount of a hundred and eleven thousand, seven oh four ninety. Again, the next agenda item, which I should point out, is this bid did not include the roof structure, which Jason will be kinda discussing with the next item.
I don't have a problem with anybody else having an issue with furniture, I can't move on to the next one.
Can we rent the spot to the county then?
Who's that? Request to purchase storage building, Mr. Stordahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. We got a quotation from, I handed it on to all of you folks tonight, from Structures Unlimited through NJPA, through NJPA pricing. The quotation was for eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty, or sixty-by-sixty building. It would fit the foundation described in the previous item. So the total cost for the building, including, excuse me, including walls, foundation, building, everything, is two hundred and one thousand, six hundred and eighty-four ninety. So...
What would we budget for?
Two hundred thousand, Carly.
Yep.
Did you say money on the other project?
I just wanted to...
Just wanted everybody to know.
We had more than that in the budget, didn't we? What was the budget amount?
Two hundred.
Two hundred?
Yep.
Right.
Mr. Vedder.
Just noticing they want ninety percent of this paid before they even start working on it.
I haven't talked to him about that, Clarence. I will talk to him before the meeting.
Anybody else have anything? Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Number seven, request to declare loader surplus, Mr. Stordahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. This one's maybe more of a formality, it's to declare the loader that we were gonna trade in earlier, if you remember, unit one thirty-one, we had to do some repairs on it, and council decided that we would move forward with the repairs and, and try to sell, sell the loader, and the repairs are done now, and so we're just asking for approval to declare the loader surplus.
Anybody have any questions?
I'd like to make, make a few comments on it. I went up there to look at it, and apparently you've got something happening underground. It looks to me like you've got a vein of water, we're gonna have problems in the future.
We're on the loader, Henry, we're talking about the loader right now.
Oh, you're talking about the loader?
Yeah, we moved on already.
I thought you were talking about the other one.
He may be one ahead.
We're still on the loader. Anybody else? Nope. Okay, let's move on to the next one. Requesting repairs of Twentieth Street and Fifth Avenue Northwest, Mr. Stordahl again.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, Twentieth Street and Fifth has been in need of some repairs for a while now. We're talking about total reconstruction, long-term, but in the short term, we have some issues out there that are gonna be pretty big safety issues. Along the curb and gutter, that's where, if you look at the map, Twentieth Street runs east and west there, the maps, I apologize, north is actually, if you turn the map upside down, north is up. You'll see areas in blue indicated on there, there are a couple frost boils, there's actually clay that's pushed up through the pavement. We've been knocking it out with a motor grader right now to kinda try to, try to make it a little, little more safe coming across there. The areas in red that are outlined are areas along the curb and gutter that have sunk along the street, and in some cases, there's six, eight inches of drop on there. So, so I went ahead and got a few estimates to repair, and the repair would be an eight, eight-foot, wherever you see a red line there along the curb and gutter would be eight-foot wide strip of bituminous, that would be laid down to basically level out, it'd be almost like a leveling course along the curb and gutter there, along Twentieth and Fifth. And the blue areas then would be areas that would be dug out, and then there'd be a separation cloth that would be laid out, there'd be material that would be laid on top of that, and then overlaid with asphalt in those areas. I got three different estimates, and the low estimate came in at thirty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars from Strata. So my recommendation would be to move forward with the repairs of Twentieth and Fifth, and awarding the job to Strata for thirty thousand, eight fifty-five.
Henry, you have...
What do you think, that you have an underground vein of water there?
I believe so. I believe there's, it's definitely wet in the area, for whatever reason.
I support it, but there's a very unusual condition, and the council should be aware of it in the future, and you're gonna have people in the position of having to pay for a street twice. So we better do some future planning. But everybody should go and look at it. The whole north end has a lot of underground veins, I have one a half a block away from me, so it's, it's like a spring. We have it over by the Civic Center also. No further comments.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. What did you have budgeted for this?
We, this wasn't a budgeted item. It would be just through our regular street.
Thank you, thirty thousand?
No, it'd be our, our street maintenance dollars, just internal. A rare show of humor by Mr. Vedder.
But that's, there's a point to me. With the excavation, that eighteen-inch excavation, is there any potential for additional work, change order potential, because of, you could get down to eighteen and need more, or expand it, or are you pretty confident that this is all you're gonna need?
Yeah, I'm pretty confident, I guess, that this is probably all we'd need for that area. I mean, you could, you could go on and on, and just replace the whole entire works, you know, at some point, but these are areas that have been identified that were, the alligator cracking was the worst, up to where the blow-in is, that's kinda how we have it contained, so I don't think that we would, we would be going any deeper or any further. This is kinda, I don't wanna say it this way, but it's kind of a band-aid, just to get us through until we can reconstruct it properly down the road.
Which leads me to the next question is, what's our schedule for replacement? I mean, we've been talking about this since probably the first year I was on the council the first time, which was two thousand and eight. So just wondering, I mean, is this street ever gonna get done, or...
I know Mr. Murphy has called our, called us on the carpet a few times, and also Mr. Emery, let's go in and look at our street replacement policy. We really don't have a strong, from a funding standpoint, a strong street replacement policy. We're pretty clear on specials, pretty clear for new construction, but as for the, our guiding policy on street replacement, we gotta put some front-end work on that before we can tackle Twentieth or any other street for, for full replacement.
Particularly if we're gonna look at a cost here with the city, where if the, if we're gonna assess the entire...
Third, third, and a third?
There's be stake, be...
One last thing on that project, I have a friend, Craig, that lives on Twentieth Street. He said there was one hole in particular that was troublesome, until a compact car fell in there, and now they just drive over that, so it hasn't been a problem ever since.
Or you can literally bottom out your truck going through it, trust me.
Mark, still have something?
No, I just wanna make sure that we're getting that on our radar, because...
Anybody else have anything on this project? Mike?
I just wanna point out that we've had attempts at coming up with a street replacement policy. We spent a great deal of time back in, I think it was twenty oh eight or oh nine, we had a task force to, to look into it, we had a couple of citizens that live on state aid roads that, that participated in that, and we spent several months coming up with ideas, and they went nowhere. It's a, it's a very difficult problem, and I, I don't see it really getting any easier, because the, the forces that collide are the classic immovable object and unstoppable force, and so have, have your minds open going into this process that, again, we may need to compromise our principles in order to find a resolution, so, I know.
But along that line, if it's a one- or two-year process to establish a street maintenance policy, that is what makes me support a fairly extensive patch on Twentieth and Fifth, you said, right, Fifth?
Yep.
Because it's, it's one, we're one, two years away from even having a policy, and then you go to bids, and it's, so maybe three years to where you'd replace a street. So that enables me to speak in favor of a pretty substantial patch going in there.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess, maybe it's not perfectly germane to this one, but might be a good idea for Mr. Stordahl to give everybody update on what's going on on two ends of Fourth Avenue, and maybe some possible costs involved in those. I don't know if you wanna step out and say it might, might, might affect our quotes, I guess, but...
I was actually gonna bring that up.
Okay.
For this meeting too, as well, not maybe the one we talked about earlier today, but, so we have two different things going on on Fourth. On Fourth, right now, we have sanitary sewer that we had an issue with, there was a separation in it between Sacred Heart and the Ouijes along Fourth there.
Okay.
So we had to go in and dig that area up, and not sure what the cost is gonna be. It was just a, probably about a two-foot separation to dig down there and take care of it, but there's also a storm sewer line and a force main that runs right along it. Storm sewer line runs perpendicular, the force main runs along it, so it's kinda touchy to dig around there. We, we ended up, we found that we have a storm sewer line that's also busted in the same area. So we have to replace that as well, and just before the meeting, we found that we're gonna have to take it back to the manhole, so it's, it's a little bit larger than we thought, but the good in it, I guess, is we're gonna, we're gonna be able to replace a decent-sized chunk of it while we're down there with the sanitary. So I'm not sure on the cost on that project yet, I'll be updating council as we move forward. The other one that Mark is referring to is one further north on Fourth, up towards the underpass of Highway Two. It's an area where, for whatever reason, it, it got hot and the concrete popped up there, and I'm receiving estimates to repair right now. That'll be a, I'm anticipating under ten thousand dollar repair. We're gonna have to remove probably eight panels there. Panels were a little bit mismatched, I, I think there was maybe two different projects, street projects at different times, and that's kinda where they met, the projects. So that, that's just another fix that we're looking at.
Okay, thank you, sir. Nothing else on the Twentieth Street and Fifth Avenue? Move on to the next one. Request to purchase fire engine, Chief Larson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the last time we talked, we started the whole process over again, because of the company was sold out and they couldn't promise us service. We, we joined a purchasing company, Houston-Galveston Area Consortium, which ninety-some percent of the fire trucks being built today are coming out of there, which makes it a competitive bid, just to choose a company and go with. We, we still wanted a bid from two companies. We actually went to Indianapolis and talked to many companies, and there are some that would not bid it for what we were looking at. They said they couldn't compete anywhere in the price. Fire Safety with E1 Fire Truck came in with low bid at four hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-four, with a discount of, prepay of a hundred percent of fourteen thousand, seven eighty-five, and that was kinda the direction that we talked ahead of time. Other, there are some variables in here. We are supposed to go to the factory for a pre-build meeting, and there, it could be that, something that we have in the bid, we actually meet with the engineers and iron, iron the facts out. We're looking at, doing some research right now on the generator, actually, the generator and the reels with the new LED lights and service equipment, if, if it's a possibility that we can do without it, is a savings of twenty-some thousand dollars. So there are some variables we are still looking at that haven't been worked out. So I guess what we're looking at is, if this is the area we're talking about, some sort of approval to move ahead and have city attorney right up in the... Other, there are some variables in here. We are supposed to go to the factory for a pre-build meeting, and there, it could be that, something that we have in the bid, we actually meet with the engineers and iron the facts out. We're looking at, doing some research right now on the generator, actually, the generator and the reels with the new LED lights and service equipment, if it's a possibility that we can do without it, is a savings of twenty-some thousand dollars. So, there are some variables we are still looking at that haven't been worked out. So, I guess what we're looking at is if this is the area we were talking about, some sort of approval to move ahead and have city attorney write up an agreement between the city and the rural, meet with the rural at that time. The verbal agreement we have with them is they're in this for two hundred thousand dollars, and the balance would be to the city. I think it would be a big savings to both city and rural. I think oh eight was the last fire truck we purchased at three hundred and twenty-five for the city back then. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Or Chief Larson?
I do. So, you would send, we send people there to the factory?
Yes, for the pre-build meeting.
How many?
There's been three on the committee that have stuck with it. I guess at that point, we're just, it was supposed to be included in the bid, and I have to check with Fire Safety. At one point, they said it was not included, so.
It's not in Hawaii?
Florida.
Oh, wow.
And that's questionable, too, because I think the chassis is built in Florida, and the body is stainless steel, and I think that's built in New York, so.
Anybody else have anything? Seeing none. Appreciate it, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Number ten, review of sales tax ordinance, Mr. Gullstead.
Well, essentially, this sales tax ordinance is to finalize the process that we started regarding the one percent sales tax for the repayment of the pool project. I have drafted a proposed document for you to review, and essentially, it is required that we pass an ordinance, whether it's this one or another ordinance, and then once it's done, we have to have it certified with the state. So, this was the first draft for a comment review. I took some liberties because I'm not exactly sure how we were going to actually collect, and, so what I did do is I took a compilation, looked it across a number of different cities that had previous ordinances, spoke with the League of Minnesota Cities, and then essentially drafted this to comply with law and what we do for the city. So, if there's any other questions, I've been working with Megan. She's probably got more involved in it than me. As always, she's a great help.
Anybody have any questions from Mr. Gullstead?
Thanks for dotting the i's and crossing the t's. Yep.
Number eleven, League of Minnesota Legislators of Distinction for two thousand seventeen. Eric Gander.
Well, if anyone wondered if Senator Mark Johnson would come out of the blocks and actually do some good, or if he'd take a while to learn the ropes down there, I think the League of Minnesota Cities has gone a good way toward answering that question. They've recognized him as a League of Minnesota Cities legislator of distinction for the year two thousand seventeen. They really appreciate his accessibility, his ability to consult with them on a variety of different legislative issues, and specifically, they appreciate that Senator Mark Johnson was a chief author of the Workforce Housing TIF bill. He's working really hard for this whole area. Every time that we've seen him, had a chance to meet with him, he understands our local issues very well, and obviously, works well with others down there in Saint Paul. And so, I just want to say thank you again to Senator Mark Johnson, and to acknowledge that League of Minnesota Cities agrees with us that, that he's doing a good job so far in his tenure. And so, I'll reach out to the media also as they've requested and make sure they're aware of what's going on there. And so, just wanted to share that with you all.
Can I just add one comment to that?
Yes, sir.
I won't take long. I saw Senator Johnson at the fair this week. He's, and I just wanted to point out, at our last work session, we went through our priorities, and there was some discussion about a south-end bridge. A subsequent news report on the radio about that, Senator Johnson heard that, heard the mayor invite anyone who wanted to attend the meeting with Roland Young in his office, and he showed up that day. He's very interested in helping us with that bridge, and I just want to say on the record, I appreciate that, and I think he's earned this, this distinction from the League of Cities. So, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you. And move on to review of city fees. Megan.
Well, as before, this is just, I think next time around it'll be perks and rec, but this is just the last of the fees before perks and rec. If you guys have any questions on it, otherwise, then please don't respond at all.
Anybody have any questions? Henry?
No, no. I'd like to make a comment before we quit.
Okay, go ahead.
Some of you people may be familiar with the name Jack Sherlock. Jack Sherlock is regarded as being one of the most influential people to walk the streets of East Grand Forks. I got a call the first part of the week from the lady who's head of the Heritage Foundation, three Hammerbeck, and the grandchildren of this Jack Sherlock are going to come in here, and they're going to be in the campground, the great-grandkids. And this man was a magician. He did so much for East Grand Forks, you couldn't believe it. The greatest salesman we've ever had, and in the various historical publications, it always lists him as esteemed. And I would like to have the administrator and Doc, if you could meet him, and I'm going to give him some history, written history, to all of those people. And we're going, I can contact you at a later date, this probably tomorrow or the next day, and get the time. But Jack Sherlock, during that period of time, we had what was called a commercial club, and he was recognized by most people in East Grand Forks, the man that bought wrought American crystals at East Grand Forks. Now, there are a lot of other people, especially in the Fisher area, that laid the foundation for it, but there isn't any question about one thing, that he had a tremendous influence in that respect. Now, there's various numbers that are set forth on American crystal. Talking about billions, but there are a whole network. You're talking five billion plus. And what it, what he has demonstrated is when good people get together, good people working together can do great things. Individually, we can only do so much. And I want to toot the horn a little bit to show appreciation to the family. And the family, he, his family was related into the Devitt family. Ed Devitt was a federal judge. He was also a congressman, good Republican, Doc, by the way, and Ed Devitt was. But I think that it's important that we recognize him for what he's done, and hopefully, in the future, we'll have more people like him. It's kind of interesting for you people who are the Catholic faith, the groups that were part of the Catholic Church are entirely different now than what they were at that time. But I'll make handouts next meeting to all the councilmen. They can see what I mean. Would you be available, you think, at noon?
Sure, yeah. Tell me again the dates of when they'll be here, Henry.
Well, they're, they're going to meet out there at the Heritage Foundation.
Do you have a date?
On Friday.
This Friday?
This Friday.
Okay.
But I'll get the exact time.
Let me know.
But it's, it's important that when people do things like that, the family should, we should recognize and tell the family they're here. It's kind of interesting. It's hard for me to believe, but Harold said that our usage of the campground is way up. Dave?
I don't know. I haven't spoken to him in a long time.
He said it was way up. Is that true?
You know, I would have to discuss that. You, I would want to have the number. As far as this year, no, I guess I haven't spoken with Catherine about that.
I've not, I've not seen else.
Sounds good. Entertainer motion adjourned. Move. Move by Raphael, second by Pachivinsky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carried. Mean adjourned.
Do you want to, do you want to meet him? Pardon? Won't you? Okay.